Jimmy did stated that he'll be running a little bit behind. He might be logging in in the meantime, okay? So I'd like to call this meeting to order. He goes, let's call this meeting order for the FY twenty-two budget meeting of mayor and city council. This is a virtual meeting for Tuesday, April eleventh at seven P M. So call to order Valerie Woodrow.
I'm here.
Jared Stoffus. Jared, I see you, but I cannot hear you.
Sorry, I was muted. I'm here. Sorry about that.
Okay, and I don't see Luke yet, so let me know when he comes in, okay? And Jimmy did say he was gonna run a little bit behind, like I mentioned, all right? So seeing that there's three of us, this meeting has been called to order at seven oh four P M. Item number two, please note Luke is here as well. Item number two, review of the agenda. Jared, can you please go ahead and read the agenda as proposed, and I am gonna be adding one item? Jared, you're speaking, you're muted.
Sorry, and Melissa, can you scroll up a little bit? It's the agenda of the proposed FY twenty twenty-four budget meeting of the mayor, city council, city mariner, virtual meeting, Tuesday, April eleventh, twenty twenty-three, seven P M. Items for discussion, number one, call to order. Number two, review of the agenda. Number three, discussion on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. Number four, reading of ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance establishing the tax rate, adopting the annual budget, and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first, twenty twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and number five, adjournment.
Thank you guys so much. The item that I'm gonna request to be added is the emergency ordinance for the rent stabilization. As we discussed last week, we, the county council has passed rent stabilization as an emergency ordinance, and we would like to fall under U N T O next year for FY twenty, January twenty-fourth. So we'll be adding it as a second reading adoption ordinance, old dash twenty twenty-three. A mini orange, so move it, Melissa. A mini orange, ten twenty-two to first affected date of, they're open to January first, twenty twenty-four, and declaring the consent to be bound by the churns of Pregeorges County C B O seven twenty twenty-three through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion to add that item to the agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
Is it probably moved and seconded any discussion? Abstentions, objections, here none, and this item is gonna be the new number five, and as you can see, you can see it on the screen, all right? All right, thank you guys so much. All right, and I went ahead and read the items, so can I have a, are we all good with the agenda as presented, everyone? So Valerie, we're good?
Yep, I'm good, thank you.
Jared? I'm mute.
I'm sorry, we are good.
And Luke?
Good.
Okay, good. Alert me once you see Jimmy on it, please, Jared, or any of you guys, so that way I could call upon him in case, okay?
Absolutely, Mayor.
All right, perfect, thank you so much. All right, so we have a working agenda for the budget discussion for FY twenty-four. All right, so moving on to item number three, the discussion on proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget. The mayor council will have discussion of proposed FY twenty-four budget. For those that have been following, this is part of the meetings that have been placed in the calendar since December of last year, and they've been announced repeatedly. So we've had the public hearing two Saturdays ago, and we, we came back from recess last Tuesday, and we finalized the full discussion of the hearing and the work session from the budget, so we are on time. And today is a, it's a budget discussion on its own, right? We have been putting this, the budget calendar for years, so this is like way beyond, at least we could tell you for the last seven years, it's been a budget calendar, even before Luke and I joined the council, just to let residents be aware when the budget will be discussed. So tonight will be like the first read-through. We did went line item by line item on that Saturday, asking questions about directors. There's some information that's gonna be sent back to us, but at this point, we'll go ahead and read some of the changes that we made from the read-through that we had and what the line item means, so that we're all on the same page. You guys could find the budget on the city mariner webpage, correct, Melissa?
Yes, Mayor.
And do you know under what tab, Melissa? Is it under finance? Is it on the main page?
It's on the finance.
So under finance, you could find the budget information, so that way you could follow us with, with us. So at this point, we'll discuss some of the changes that we have made from the original budget that was given to us, so the last version was a three twenty-five, and thank you for that, and this is like the added items to the budget. This is version April sixth, twenty twenty-three, and if anything is moved on, we'll go ahead and list the versions, so that way residents know which version we are looking at, okay? By the time of this budget process, once we vote, the staff will put this in a very nice document, and it's gonna be put it under our website, and obviously, if you guys want hard copies, you are welcome to obtain them at city called, and council will each get their own cop, hard copy of this document as well, all right? So without any further ado, we have in front of us the city mariner FY twenty-four budget changes, the city just a new budget version from April sixth, twenty twenty-three, and these are items that mayor and councils collectively have worked on and created some of the changes, and we basically all moved together in consensus. Until the budget is approved, basically, we move on consensus, and agreement that that's what we want, until like we officially vote on it. So today is just a read-through, no vote, is taking place when it comes to the budget, just to clarify everything. Luke, did I miss anything regarding the, just the overview of the budget, nothing in detail yet?
I think that's right.
All right, perfect. So I'm gonna move the floor to our financial consultant, Ron Wilson, for him to do the read-through, so that way I could save a little bit of my voice. All right, so Ron, can you please make sure you read the item, the line, what it is, what the previous amount, the new amount, and the change, as you have listed here in the department? So thank you guys so much. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. In the revenue section for line item forty-one hundred, real estate taxes, we originally budgeted five million one hundred and sixteen thousand seven twenty-eight. Our new budgeted amount is five million seventy-five thousand four twenty-eight. That's a reduction of forty-one thousand three hundred, and that's to reflect the one cent reduction in the tax rate for single-family homes and townhouses. Line item forty-two fourteen, rent stabilization. We originally budgeted one hundred and thirty-five thousand six twenty-five. We are now budgeting sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve and fifty cents, a reduction of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, and that's to reflect that the rent stabilization will go into effect midway during the year. Line item forty-six ninety-eight, ARPA revenue, we originally budgeted three million five hundred thousand dollars. We are now budgeting three million five hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, an increase of ninety-nine thousand five hundred. That's to reflect the movement of certain expense items out of the operating budget and to the ARPA grant that we have. The net revenue change is a reduction of nine thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. In the expense section, fifty-one oh three, medical insurance, this is across all the departments. We originally budgeted seven hundred and thirty-two thousand two hundred and ninety-one dollars and ninety-eight cents. We're now budgeting eight hundred and fifty-three thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-four cents, an increase of one hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-six cents. This is to reflect the new rates that we received from legit for, for our health insurance for the upcoming year. Line item fifty-one oh two, dental insurance, again, across all departments. We originally budgeted twenty-five thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and sixty-five cents. We're now budgeting twenty-nine thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents, an increase of three thousand nine hundred and forty-six dollars and eighty-seven cents. Again, this reflects the new rates from legit for the dental insurance. Line item fifty-one oh seven, retirement contribution for the mayor and council department. We originally budgeted a thousand forty. We're now budgeting zero, a reduction of one thousand and forty. This is to reflect that none of the current council members are participating in the retirement program. Line item fifty-five oh five, city-sponsored meetings for the mayor and council department, we originally budgeted fifty-five hundred. We're now budgeting twenty-five hundred, a reduction of three thousand dollars, and this was at the request of council. Line item fifty-five twenty-nine, mayor and council retreat. This is in the mayor and council department, originally budgeted three thousand. We're now budgeting zero, a reduction of three thousand dollars, and this is due to the council accelerating the date for their retreat into the current fiscal year, so we will not have the expense for next fiscal year. Line item fifty-four eleven, employee training for city hall department. We originally budgeted sixteen thousand. We're now budgeting six thousand, a reduction of ten thousand. And this was at the direction of council for the city manager to find ten thousand dollars in savings across several different expense items, and his best approach to that was to take it from the city hall employee training. Line item fifty-five ninety-seven, ARPA expense. This is also the city hall department. We originally budgeted three million five hundred thousand. We now budget three million five hundred and ninety-nine thousand five hundred, an increase of ninety-nine thousand five hundred dollars, and this is the re-budgeting of certain operating expenses into ARPA. The next line item is fifty-five thirty-four, Juneteenth, in the administrative services department. We originally had no budget for that line item. We're now budgeting a thousand for an increase of a thousand, and this is at the direction of council. Line item fifty-five forty-five, scholarship programs, administrative services department. We originally budgeted two thousand. We're now budgeting one thousand, a reduction of one thousand. This was at the request of council. Line item fifty-five forty-seven, CERT team, administrative services department. Originally, we budgeted four thousand. We're now budgeting three thousand for a reduction of one thousand, again, at the direction of council. Line item fifty-five fifty-five, arts council. We originally budgeted nineteen thousand. We're now budgeting fifteen thousand for a reduction of four thousand, and this is at the direction of council. Line item fifty-six forty-eight, police advisory board, administrative services department. We originally had no budget for this line item. We're now budgeting three thousand, and this was at the direction of council. Line item fifty-six forty-nine, rent stabilization board, administrative services department. We originally budgeted zero. We're now budgeting one thousand for an increase of one thousand, and that was at the direction of council. Next line item, salaries. For the police department, we originally budgeted one million two seventy-two, nine seventy-two point fifteen. We're now budgeting one million two hundred and fifty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents, a decrease of eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars and sixty-five cents, and this is due to the taking out of the three percent COLA for the members of the F O P who are under the C B A.
Ron, sorry, Mayor, may I have the floor for a second there, just to, so residents?
Hold on. So Ron, how many more lines do you need? Is it just this one, the fifty thousand one, and that's it?
No, there's, there's another partial page.
Okay, do me a favor. So Luke, do you wanna talk about the whole entire thing right here?
No, 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 I just, I just wanna have a point of clarification for the public, so we are not cutting police salaries by three percent. We are actually raising police salaries in the F O P by twelve percent. That C B A agreement raised their salaries by twelve percent. It includes a signing bonus as well, a substantial amount. So because they got that twelve percent increase in the signing bonus, they don't get the COLA this year. So I just wanna clarify that for people. The police, F O P is getting a substantial raise. It's just not reflecting in the COLA. It's reflected in their collective bargaining agreement that was just signed, so that's why this, so this looks like you're, we're cutting money. We are not. Just wanna be clear for everybody.
Thank you, Ron. Do me a favor, make a note of it that where this section is that, you put that information on it, so that when the residents read it, and they're not here tonight, it is, it is placed there, okay? Luke, if you can work with Ron to put the paragraph together, that will help. That way it hits the point that you just talked, or Ron literally just hear what Luke said and added to that, because it does make a big difference in, in what it, what it really is, because this looks like three percent off. You're a hundred percent correct, Luke. And now that twelve percent that has been increased to it, okay?
Sure will.
All right, thank you. Luke, that covers everything. Luke? Good? All right, go ahead, Ron.
Okay, line item five thousand and three, shift differential. This is for the night shift police department. We originally budgeted four hundred and fourteen thousand four fifty-two point eighty-five. We're now budgeting four oh four, six eighty-seven point fifty, a reduction of nine thousand seven sixty-five point thirty-five, again, because of the COLA. Line item fifty-one hundred, FICA, that's social security and Medicare for the police department. We originally budgeted one hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-one cents. We're now budgeting one hundred and thirty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and nine cents, a reduction of twenty-one hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents, again, because of the COLA. Line item fifty-one oh five, workers' comp, police department. We originally budgeted three hundred and four thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. We're now budgeting three hundred thousand two hundred and two dollars and fifty-five cents, a reduction of forty-seven twenty point eleven, again, due to the COLA. Fifty-one oh seven, retirement contribution for the police department. We originally budgeted one hundred and ninety-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty cents. We're now budgeting one hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and ninety-three cents, a reduction of three thousand fifty-two dollars and thirty-seven cents, again, because of the COLA. And just so that everybody understands, FICA, workers' comp, and the retirement contribution are a function of salaries. So when the salaries go down, the, those expenses go down. Conversely, when salaries go up, those expenses go up. Line item fifty-two oh two for the police department is computer supplies and expense, fifty-five thousand dollars. This is for new tough book computers for patrol cars. We are moving that expense to ARPA. Line item fifty-two oh five, uniforms for the police department. This is for new officers that will be, we will be recruiting. Thirty-six thousand five hundred dollars was the original budget, and we're zeroing that out and moving that over to ARPA. Fifty-three hundred, vehicle repair and maintenance for the police department. We originally budgeted thirty-five thousand. We're now budgeting thirty thousand for a reduction of five thousand, and that's to reflect the replacement of older vehicles with newer vehicles, and we're expecting that the repair and maintenance expense would go down. Line item fifty-five forty-two, bike co-op expense. For Public Works, we originally budgeted eight thousand. We are now moving that to ARPA. So that's an eight thousand dollar reduction in that line item in the operating budget. Line item fifty-six eleven, street lights and signals. For Public Works, we originally budgeted ninety thousand. We're now budgeting eighty-five thousand for a reduction of five thousand. Line item fifty-seven hundred, capital projects for Public Works. We originally budgeted two hundred thousand dollars for street repairs. We're now budgeting one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for a reduction of sixty-nine thousand. And then finally, line item fifty-five ninety-eight, contingency. This is in the other department. We originally budgeted fifty-six thousand two seventy-eight point ninety-six. We're now budgeting fifty-six thousand six forty-six point oh three for an increase of three hundred and sixty-seven dollars and seven cents. All of the expense changes, net to a reduction in expenses of nine thousand six hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents, which is the exact same amount as the reduction in the revenue, so the impact on the surplus or deficit is a net zero.
Okay, thank you so much, Ron. This is the final page, correct?
Yes. There, there are some footnotes here that have to do with some non-budget items, just some labeling and some things like that. I don't know that that requires a reading.
It doesn't, but for the next budget, we need to have not just this as a summary of what's being changed, but the actual budget itself that reflects the change, okay?
I'm sorry. I didn't understand that.
I said for the next budget, that we have like the physical budget, we need not just a summary, but then those numbers being changed on the budget itself.
Yeah, everything on this summary is reflected in your updated budget, including the, the footnoted items.
Thank you so much. I wanna make sure that's clear. I do have, I do see a question on it. It says, for Nina Young, with the size are going up by tougher status part of the collective bargain agreement, what is the actual cost of salaries? They can work with sales com. First department won't decide on its ultimately an increase. Nina, originally, the, Ron, correct me if I'm wrong, and you could add more detail on it, but the percentage was already part of the budget when it was originally presented out, so the team already like forecasted it on it in case it went through, so that we will, we will deduct it if need to be any changes, but it was already there, correct, Ron?
That is correct. The original budget that was presented on March twenty-fifth included our projection of the increases due to the new collective bargaining agreement, plus a three percent COLA. So it was actually got a fifteen percent increase that would have happened by July first, and we are taking out the three percent COLA.
Yeah, so that's the reason why you see that it shows decrease on it, because they already put it there. Very wisely projecting ahead, so that way it allowed for them to, it'll be easier to take it out and actually find the money after the fact. That's the reason why they did it. All right, thank you, Nina. Daniel, so the C B A has included the removal of their COLA, it's just for this year, Daniel, not for any future years. It was just part of the agreement for this year, okay? All right, so council, you have in front of you some of the edits that we make. There is one or two that I need to make, starting with fifty-six forty-eight, the police advisory board has three thousand dollars, the rent stabilization board only has a thousand. I honestly feel like it should be the opposite, mainly because the police advisory boards, they have no function except for like reviewing the documents from the police, while the rent stabilization board will have a lot more functions, including reviewing information from, from the apartment owners, from the landlords, as well as putting documentation out, that including mailers and everything else, as part of like the things that the person needs to do in conjunction with them. So I would request if we could swap those or put two thousand each, that will work, but yeah, the rent stabilization board will be, will intake a little bit more than other, okay? So that'd be my proposal for you guys, so either switch the amount from forty-eight to forty-nine, so we still at a balance, or just switch it to a thousand. One thousand for the police advisory board and three thousand, and the three thousand for rent stabilization, okay? The other one, I know emailed you guys, and thank you for not replying at all. I had, I had asked for information to be submitted to us when it came to an additional two percent of COLA increase for employees that were earning less than fifty thousand. Luke, was this four years ago? Four, five years ago, we went ahead and do something similar for staff that was earning under certain amount? So this is the second time we have done something similar, where people that earn the least amount in the city receive a little, a little bit more in order to balance it out, just a bit more between the staff, because the gaps are a little bit bigger. But Ron, what was the amount? You said it was a thousand and one?
Give me one second.
Eighty-two hundred, Ron.
Eighty, eighty-two hundred?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kamal. I know you're under the weather, so I'm trying to make sure you don't talk as much, okay? But I'm fine calling on you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so those are my proposals, and I need to know where you guys are at, at least with those two. My original suggestion was for us to look into contingency money, to we, we could withdraw those eight thousand dollars in order to make it a smooth transition in and out. But you guys could suggest as, as you choose. I know at least more than one of you did say that you guys were supported, you know, without copying everybody, okay? So council, I'm gonna open it up, first to hear when it comes to the additional two percent for the staff, and then the other one between the police advisory board and the rent stabilization board, okay? So we'll do it separately. The floor is to you guys, so I'm gonna call on, let me see, did Jimmy made it yet? No. All right, so I'm gonna go with word, no, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Jimmy.
I think that for the police advisory board and the rent stabilization board, I think giving them both two thousand dollars, and then to the extent they need more funding, we can always revisit it mid-year, just so that people who are thinking of serving on the rent stabilization board or people who are on the police advisory board Um, just so that, uh, people who are thinking of serving on the rent stabilization board or people who are on the police advisory board. Um, we've never had a problem, uh, when boards, you know, reasonably hit their cap and need a little bit more extra funding of making sure they have the funding they need. Um, so I wouldn't worry about that. So I think two and two makes good sense. Um, I would just generally note that I think the mayor and council were hoping that during this meeting, we could explore, um, COLAs for all staff, um, uh, that are more than the three percent that the city manager submitted in his budget. Um, while we are very supportive of the three percent that the city manager, uh, submitted in the budget, um, I think we all understand that inflation is hurting everybody. Um, and, um, we had hoped to kind of have a longer discussion about four percent, five percent. What, what, what could we do for the rest of staff? Um, unfortunately, that first expense item there, fifty one oh three medical insurance, um, is new. That jump of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars is new. That happened between our last meeting and this meeting. Um, and that really ties our hands, um, because that's just like a big hit to come all of a sudden from legit. Um, no one's to blame. That's nobody's fault. Um, that's just sort of happened, um, and we have to deal with that and manage with that. Um, that takes some of the, you know, tools away from us because we had a lot of discussion around all our line items in a budget to try to get to a budget that we could live with, and that was good. Um, and so to undo all that now to find COLAs is really, really difficult, um, to do. Um, in this budget, I think it's a really good document. We have nine hundred thousand dollars devoted to our streets and sidewalks. It's the most I think we've, we've ever had. Um, and that's a reflection of the very important street and sidewalk study that we're doing right now, um, and the fact that we'll need funding for that. Um, and so, um, but I think, but I support the five percent for those, um, under making under fifty thousand dollars. That's not without precedent. We have done that before, as the mayor said. Um, so that's my thoughts, um, there, and I'll stop talking.
M- Mayor, can I offer, um, m- maybe a, a, a way to, to, to think about this? Would that be appropriate at this time?
First, let's go through the council to see this is what they would like to do before we do the second part because definitely you will have done that if, you know, I, we'll hear them. I don't want to put words into their mouth, and then we'll move to the next step, okay?
Mm-hmm.
All right, uh, Jimmy, you're next, or do you want me to skip you at the end?
Well, I, I would defer it. I like to hear what Ron says before I speak, so, I mean, other people, but here's what his idea is.
Ron, are you talking about where to get the money from? Is that where you're gonna talk about something different?
Mayor, we have a suggestion for council, and if you allow, Ron can explain it.
Hold on. So guys, it's just, he's gonna suggest where to take it out, but it's up to you guys if you want to hear him now. But if we're not in agreement, he'll give you the biggest donation with no, um, with nothing with us to do.
I, I'd love to hear what he has to say. That may change my remarks just now. Thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, um, I, I was re- reviewing all the budget line items to see where we might be able to, to get the funds for the additional two percent of COLA. Um, to put it in perspective, the, the additional two percent of COLA for everybody other than the FOP would, uh, would cost us, uh, forty one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I, still upon the, um, the debt service, not, not for the bonds, but for the various capital leases that we have. And we, we have the ability to accelerate, uh, some of that expense into fiscal twenty-three. And we have plenty of room in fiscal twenty-three to, to handle that cost. And if we did that, we could free up, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty or sixty thousand dollars out of fiscal twenty-four's budget. And that would, uh, provide the funds to pay for the additional two percent COLA. And also keep in mind that going forward into future years, um, a- all of these, uh, capital leases that we have on the books will, will be done. There won't be any more capital lease expense for fiscal twenty-five a- and forward, uh, unless we make the decision to take out some new leases. Right now, we're operating under the assumption that we're gonna pay for equipment out of cash. So, that, that, that was my, my offer of information.
Um, maybe not in this meeting, Ron, but definitely maybe for the work session, I would like for us to add, um, how we proposing to raise, um, back the two million dollars that we, uh, took out in the loan. Um, definitely that'd be very smart, um, to figure out what the future plan is for us since we took two thousand dollar loan. Not just to take up the fee, but also make sure that we are able to recuperate those funds back into our reserve account so that we have more opportunity for a rainy day. Um, so to me, it's a two-tier thing, so can we make sure we add it for the next work session?
Sure.
We'll have the longer discussion. Okay?
Yeah, but just to clarify, I'm not talking about taking out any new loans. All, all I'm talking about is, is in, for some of them, instead of paying them in fiscal twenty-four, we pay them in fiscal twenty-three. There's no, uh, n- net increase in cost. We're just shifting it to a different year. Uh, and we have the room and the budget to do it for this year for fiscal twenty-three. Um, a- and thereby we can take it out of the fiscal twenty-four budget.
Uh, yeah, Ron, I wasn't thinking of a new loan. I was thinking of one, yes, paying the two million dollars that we took, clearly took out of the bank. And two, those two million dollars, um, what is the plan to replenish, um, our coffers? Uh, you know, for lack of a better word, when it comes to, um, the city? Because that's two million dollars that were invested into a project, right? In this case, Paul's Hall, right? But those two million dollars are gone. So making sure that we have a plan when it comes to a rainy day fund and what it looks like for the short and long term as well. Okay? All right, perfect. Um, so let me go to council and figure out what is it that they, 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 you know, that. So at this point, we talked about the police advisory board, rent stabilization, and the next one was like the COLA. Um, I would address those two, and then if you guys want to open it to, um, to a different discussion, that's fine. But usually, um, when we put two things in the table, we stick to those two. You guys go open a third one. That's okay as well. All right, so Jimmy, you're, you were next on the deck. You said you wanted to hear what Ron had to say, so go ahead.
Uh, I don't have anything to say right now, Mayor. I'm just listening.
Sorry, you, you cut off.
Hi, I'm sorry. I just don't have anything to say right now. I'm kind of listening to one of the people saying.
Okay, perfect. I'm back to you. Uh, Jared, Valerie?
Yeah, so, um, I think first on the, sorry, fir- sorry, three things. There's the rent, uh, stabilization committee, the, um, police advisory board committee, um. I, yeah, I, I, I guess a little, it's, you know, restabilization committee is new, the police committee is new. I, I, you know, I, I think I'd, I, I guess with Luke's approach of two K and two K, that probably makes sense. And we can just reallocate around if, um, if needed. I, I, I honestly, I don't think I have a strong opinion on this one. I do, given that I don't know exactly where, um, costs might be allocated for this committee. Um, and then, uh, sorry, can you?
My apologies. It might just be me, but you're cutting off. Um, can anybody hear clearly?
I can hear you. Can you, can you all hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, Selena might be, might be.
Go ahead.
Yeah, it might be your connection. Um, and, and sorry, the last item that we're talking about, sorry, can we clarify it's Ron's? The, the point that Ron made, or what am I, what am I reflecting on?
It's the two percent COLA.
It was the two percent COLA for the staff that earned under fifty thousand. It's like eight thousand something. Uh, that was part of the question I had to address.
Yeah, I'm, um, I think I'm generally, I, I'm generally supportive of that. I, I, the thing I'm, uh, you know, just obviously trying to be, want to be mindful of, um, you know, our overall budget, I, you know, want to reflect on, uh, the fact that inflation has caused a tremendous, tremendous drives up in, in costs, um, you know, for an expense that's, that those costs obviously get passed along to our, um, um, folks that are, you know, salary earners. Um, I, you know, I, 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 I don't know that the, you know, and if you're at the lower end of the spectrum, it's, uh, it is challenging. Um, you know, the percentage increases doesn't often hit you as strongly as someone else. So, I mean, I'm directionally supportive, um, of, of the idea. Um, you know, given, given how inflation has been going up and cost of increasing, and, uh, this helps especially for our lowest earning staff, kind of ameliorates some of that. So, uh, that's my two cents right now. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I apologize if, if I, I'll type it in if I can. I hear you guys, so that we know whether it's one or the other. Okay, so Valerie, uh, you're next, and Jimmy, your mic is open.
Hey, um, yeah, thank you. Um, so I think the, I'm sorry, the police advisory board and civilization, I, I, I think it's fine to either flip them or to e- equalize them, so they're both at two thousand. I think that's fine either way. Um, um, for the COLAs, I'm definitely supportive of that idea and that proposal. Um, I like, I mean, Ron's idea potentially, um, I'd like to see more and learn more about that. But I do think I'm supportive of that, um, and I'm also supportive of taking that out of contingency if we have to. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jimmy, we're going, it's your turn again. Go ahead.
Uh, I mean, I like, uh, Ron's suggestion, uh, you know. I mean, we'll have deal of, uh, budget issues next year, but if there's a way to resolve this, this year by moving the budget this fiscal year, uh, that makes sense to me, so I kind of supportive of that. The other issue was the committees, the other issue with the committees, or what was the other issue?
The other one was to either flip from the police advisory to thousand rent stations to three thousand, or give it two and two.
Well, you know, uh, being the liaison to the, uh, police advisory board, I feel, I, I think, you know, in some ways the rent stabilization thing is a, is an unknown number. And I don't mind leaving it at one because it might be m- more involved. We're not even sure what it's gonna be involved yet. Uh, I have a sense of what the, kind of the training they're gonna do. So I, I guess the, the rent advisory board, what kind of training is almost like a question mark. And it may be more than one thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. So I don't mind leaving it at one thousand because I think, you know, the council will have to revisit exactly, you know, you know, what are they gonna need? I mean, is it gonna be some kind of a way to analyze, you know, you know, what are some of the, what are some of the exceptions, you know, like, you know, market rate and things like that? And how, you know, we're gonna have people, you know, citizens who really won't know that stuff. So I'm not sure a thousand dollars will do it, a two thousand. So I think it's like something, I'm not, I'm not concerned about leaving it only a thousand dollars because I think we'll have to reach, address it later. I'm not sure two thousand would do it either. So I, I, I lean to three thousand, one thousand, but, uh, but that's, that's where I would be leaning, but it's not a strong opinion to me.
So Jimmy, you're, you're leaning police advisory stay at three and one. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, that's what I'm leaning at. I don't feel strongly about it just because I think the one, the, 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 the rent thing isn't until January. And we don't even have a no, we don't have a sense of what kind of training that's gonna involve. Yes, three and.
So I will tell you guys, based in the orange for the police advisory, the police advisory basically meet, talk to the chief, talk to the city manager, and make recommendations to the, um, to the mayor and council. That's their full entire, that's what I'm trying to figure out why it's a three thousand dollars worth. That's the reason why I was like symbolically, we could go, well.
Well, I mean, I mean, it, it, it doesn't ma- it doesn't matter. I mean, they haven't prepared a budget. It might be kind of training on police issues and how to deal with community policing. I mean, two and two is fine. It's, you know, the, they haven't really submitted a budget, so exactly what it, what it entails. So, I mean, it's hard for me to argue that two thousand doesn't do it, you know, so.
So can we leave it two and two? The other reason why is because I feel that police advisory board might have more room for us to be able to get funds from public safety.
Okay.
That's the other reason why, I mean, because they're directly deal with it. It might be a possibility for us to get fund somewhere else where the rest of the station board, you know, two, two will even it out. Um, okay, so. Regarding the other one, I'm, um, I'm hearing a little bit of everything. How about I propose this until we get more information? Can we at the minimum do the extra two percent for the under fifty? As we get more information, if you guys need to for the rest. Luke, go ahead.
Um, I, I'd just like to ask a more, a few more questions of Ron, if that's okay?
Um, that, that's fine, but I would.
I can wait.
My, the only reason I said my way out at least, it lets us to give him, he could send us more information if you could ask a bunch of questions. And he might have them here, or you could wait for him to like email us all to get him. It's up to you. You could ask them, but also give the time to do step one, and then if we need to do step two, then we do step two.
Yeah, yeah, I think I'd rather have the conversation now. Thanks. Um, Ron, on the, um, the, m- moving the, the lease payments forward, um, that's for, is most of that for public works equipment and police cars, or is it just public works equipment?
Uh, there's public works, police, and code.
Gotcha. Um, when you say in future years, we would look to pay for that out of cash, what makes me nervous is if we, like, where would the room come in the budget?
Well, it, yeah, um, uh, I'm talking about new purchases. Um, we, we have tried to do them out of cash as a, for instance, uh, the three police vehicles that were added this year.
Yeah.
We're, we're done, we're, with the budget amendment, a- and the, uh, plan was to pay all cash. We also budgeted them for two, uh, new vehicles next year, all in cash.
Okay.
Um, uh, we, we don't know yet, uh, about code or public works, what their needs will be. Uh, but we will, uh, work with them to spread those purchases out, um, to the best of our ability. Um, knowing that at some point, um, both of those departments, uh, will need some, some new equipment. Um, and also the police department, um, the plan is for them to add, um, uh, two or three new vehicles every year, uh, on an ongoing basis.
Yeah, and moving that to electric purchase, electric vehicle purchases, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, which would, which, which might be more expensive, or their price may come down with all the inflation reduction act incentives. Um, okay, so if I look into, so I'm gonna think out loud here a little bit. So this budget already has money allocated for police car purchases, so.
Correct.
Moving, moving lease costs forward into FY twenty-four should not impact our ability to in future years purchase police cars because that's already a line item that we're not removing from the budget. That, that will be there, and we should have that money, and that should be.
Correct.
Okay. What might, it's the public works and code vehicles that are a little bit more of a question mark, and you would have to find that room in the budget.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have to evaluate that a- as the need arises.
Mm-hmm.
Um, a- and also work with the directors of those departments to be a little more forward looking and, and have a plan for, um, equipment rotation, uh, over the long haul. Um, you know, rather than coming to us and saying, oh, we need three new vehicles this year.
Yeah.
Right? When, when, we'd rather do one, uh, a year for three years.
Yeah.
If, if that's doable.
Yeah, so.
And, yeah.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, I, I, just to clarify, you know. No, I, I, just to clarify, you know, the, the, what, what I'm recommending that we do with, with the lease payments is just accelerate them a little bit, uh, you know, to straddle the fiscal year, so to speak. And the, either way we go, the, the impact on any future purchases, whether they're done in cash or lease, uh, is not affected in any way.
Yeah, right. Okay, um, I'll just speak for me, um, uh, from when I think about COLA, that's usually something that's applicable to all employees. I would be supportive of a 5% rate COLA for, for everyone. And that's just the way I think about inflation. It impacts everybody. I think we have a really high performing team um, across the city, and I'd love to see us be able to um, address that with a, with a COLA that is applicable to everybody equally. As a federal employee, that's what happens with us. We all get COLAs equally. Um, and I think that's most state agencies as well, as everybody gets that COLA. Um, I know we've done different things here in the past. I know there's precedent for it, but I would, if we do have the money, I would love to do that COLA for everybody. Um, so that's where, that's where I am. Thanks.
Okay. Who has the floor next? Valerie, Jared, Jimmy, whichever of you guys would like to floor, please let me know.
Um, yeah, thank you. I, I would generally agree. Um, if we can make it work, I think it's worth, um, investing in employees, um, and um, preparing a COLA for them. So, thank you.
Go ahead, Jared.
Sorry. Ron, I guess with that proposal from you and Mr. Kamali, is that, you know, is that a one-time suggestion, or is that something that you're proposing in out years?
No, it's, it's a one-time suggestion. Uh, e- except for one lease, in, in public works, uh, all of these capital leases are going to be done in '24 anyway.
I, I meant the COLA proposal, sorry.
Oh, the COLA proposal? Well, it's, you know, I, I, I don't know what the inflation environment is going to be going forward. You know, we, we've done 3% pretty consistently now for, for several years. I, yeah, just my personal opinion, I don't think that 5% would be the new standard. However, you know, based on, uh, what the inflation environment is like over the next year, we may want to have a serious discussion about it.
Okay. Uh, that's all I have right now.
Okay, Jimmy?
How many, Jimmy, I mean, let's, let's break it up into different discussions. Can we do, so what are the different? I mean, this, this is one, one comprehensive, uh, proposal we're talking about? I mean, I've heard the, bring the money over, I've heard the two and two, and I've heard the 50,000. Are these all, like, this is one package? Or are we talking about three different things? Anybody? No?
Sorry, Jimmy, I'm getting quite clear. I think we were having to three different, three or four different conversations. I think that's where the position lies. So I think we basically set up for the police advice, the police and rent stabilization to do two and two. So that was, I think we mostly went that way. The other part was, the proposal for, um, based on the information we got, right? And everything else was coming our way. For the original, I was like, we were not going to do anybody, right, above the 3%. For it to be 2% for those that earn, um, under 50,000, which is, um, some of the employees, there's a big gap between those that earn 50 and those that earn more than 50. So that was proposal one. So my proposal one, can we decide at least in the first one, and then we could like, if we need more information and more data, right? We could do the second part of the discussion and do it all at once. It's up to you guys. But I, I'll leave you the floor and then I'll have my thoughts on what I think about it. Go ahead.
I think we've all mentioned something, Mayor. I think you're the one who, what your opinion on it is.
No. I definitely want to make sure I make this statement because it makes it sound like we have not been good employers, which is not the correct thing to say. As Ron mentioned, we have consistently done 3% COLA every year. Um, even through COVID, even through everything that went through, it was 3% consistently. When COLA has been zero, we have done 3%. When COLA has been 1% for others, we have done 3%. When COLA has been 2%, we've done 3%. So that has not changed. So I don't want people to walk out of the assumption thinking that we have tied, um, the COLA to the cost of living because they have an inconsistent 3%. I do, I think I definitely want to make sure we point out that this budget does have an increased, uh, bonus for all staff. Um, it was a 1,200 to 50, 300, now it's 500 for each of the staff members at the end of the year. So that's also going to be taking place, um, and that's every December is given to every single staff member. You know, so I want to make sure that's upfront because I don't want people to walk out of here with the idea that staff doesn't get, hasn't gotten any COLAs or any bonus, additional bonuses. And also, um, I think it's 10 to 12 half days that the staff, um, leave early with pay. You know, that we also do, right? So those are things that we do aside from, um, the, the raises that we do for staff. Um, saying that originally I wanted to do the 2% for the 50%. Uh, 50,000 or less employees because the gap is big. So I wanted to make sure at least compensate them. People are there making, you know, uh, 60, 70, 80,000 plus, $100,000 plus are going to be hit differently than those that are making 38, 34, uh, 40,000, um, in our staff. And that's the, and that's the reality. So to, to me, that's the reason why I wanted to okay, yes, 3% for everybody else, and add that extra additional 2% for those that are, are under 50 so that we could at least, um, at, at least we ma- we make sure that, um, we, we balance it out a little bit, you know? Um, have we, we had done it in the past. We have given additional, um, COLA. I see a question says, has anybody discussed with the attorney whether you can legally provide different COLAs based on salary? We did it in the past, it should be done.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, Jimmy.
Well, one possibility is taking, we're talking about 5%. Uh, is taking it, making it a flat, you know, 5% of what the kind of 70, let's say, you know, making it 5% of what the average median raise, so if it's like $60,000 and giving everybody, you know, all those people $3,000, so it helps the people to lower and more. But still, you know, something. I mean, we've often done that, you know, in, in, you know, which, instead of doing a percentage of, it doesn't, not everybody's happy about that, but it, it helps, you know, you know, do a kind of a more of a flat rate, but above, a little bit above the do, so the people at the higher level would be lesser percent, and the people at the lower level would be a higher percent.
I mean, I'm also, um,
In other words, if you take, you know, take $70,000 or something, make 5% of that, it's $3,500. So for people at the higher level would be a lesser percent, and people at the lower level would be a higher percent. But of course, the same amount.
That I'm open to discussing, Jimmy. But that was my, my thinking of it because I do feel that people getting under 50 get hit a lot harder than those making 80 plus and, you know, um, even 70 plus. So one, we wouldn't take away the 3% that the staff was, um, expecting. We are increasing 200 plus dollars more bonus. We did increase last year, and then we're doing an increase this year. But it seems like to me at this point, we could always have this discussion, a work session, so we could pull it out of this. Because this seems like we're 100% consensus and, and, you know, where we're at. Okay, so I do have, uh, so I did address Nina's question. I have Danielle's. 5% of 1,000 is a lot more than 5% for those only making 40,000. Yeah, 100%. I, I definitely agree with that. Okay. So council, at this point, I would definitely will, would like for us to move it to a work session, and Jimmy, can you bring, can you put into more specific that proposal that you're making so that we could like discuss that one? Maybe that's what we need to do in order to have some qualifying, um, information along with it, you know?
Okay.
All right, perfect. Thank you guys so much. Uh, council, is there anything else? There was one more thing I wanted to bring when it came to the, to it. Um, I know that on it, I see a withdrawal of, um, the mayor and council retirement contributions. I definitely do, wouldn't want to take any money out of there. Because like I stated before, um, at this year, I will be splitting out my documents for my retirement and for whatever X reason, a, a former person decided not to do it, that's not on me, it wasn't the city, because I submitted a paper twice, it's my third time submitting them. But also we ask the staff to make sure that it does know where mayor and council stand with this. So I'm afraid if we put this at zero, it will become zero for all of us, and I'm not taking that opportunity for myself or anybody else that serves in council. You know, a couple of us have served, like, this is our, what, sixth, seventh year now? You know, it's quite a bit of time. And, um, so, um, I will ask for us to leave it there, and then revisit to add more to it in order to, um, to make up for, um, you know, for us to have it there at least, right? As, um, as staff finds more information on what it looks like, but, um, I'm finalizing my documents to submit because I will be submitting. I mean, this might, like I said, this is my third time submitting this document. None of the current staff was there. But after my understanding, you know, um, that was, that was taken care of on my name. It was very surprising to find that wasn't. All right, so what are your thoughts on third time and contribution portion of it, of, of this document? So I'm going to go Jared, Valerie, uh, Jimmy, Luke?
I'm, I mean, I'm, I have no additional comments at this time.
All right, Valerie?
Um, thank you. I think, um, I think, I mean, right now it's, it's adjusted to be zero. I think, you know, the conversation we've had about different boards and committees that we can always reallocate funds as needed, I think that's something we can think about. I think putting it back to 1,040 is fine as well. It's only $1,000 for you, you know, so I think it's hard to have a conversation about COLAs and then talk about mayor and council funds after that, but, um, I do think it's something to think about. I do recognize that, you know, we're all working here as well, so it makes sense to have some funding in that, in that category. So, um, I'm fine with putting it back in. Um, I'm also fine with reallocating funds after the fiscal year if we need to. And that's where I am. Thank you.
All right, uh, the other thing to point out to people, the 3% or 5% does not include mayor and council. We do not get any increases or any COLA or anything above, so I want to make sure that's very understood. There is a way we could get increases, and that's basically we vote on it, and it's until 2025 when some of us, we even see those increases because we cannot vote for our own raises. Um, at least that's basically what has been explained to us like for, feels like a century ago when we started in council, right? But, so, that's, I want to make sure it is clear. It does, the 3, 5, it does not apply to us. Um, so yeah, so every year we're in council, we definitely get paid a lot less. Okay, so Luke, uh, sorry, Jimmy, Luke, go ahead. Jimmy?
I'm sorry. I was called away. Could you remind, would you go over what it was? I'm back.
The retirement contribution for mayor and council, um, the staff is supposed to get us information on what the work looked like and what we need to submit. I stated that submitting my paper twice before in the process, and some money was being taken out of my check. Right? And, um, and I was part of it, and then I found that it wasn't, but my fear is that if we leave it at zero, it'll be forgotten, and we've asked this, I think, every year, we basically ask this in question, and we never get clear answers. But what I do know is council members that started asking me and Luke were part of this. So definitely there's a way for them to do it. Either way, what we're asking is 1,040 to be left there so that when we continue the conversation, and some of us are going to be submitting those documents. Right? I'm not, I don't want to submit them and then be like, oh, there's no, there's no funding until like, God knows when, you know, we go through this process again. You know, so, go ahead.
That's fine.
Thank you, Luke?
Yeah, um, just a couple of things. A, a pension for like a salary that we're getting is like nothing. You get like $2 a month. Like, it's not, there's no, there's also like no I don't, I, I guess I don't understand the parameters of this. I'm sure there's a calculation. I'm sure it's like 1% of your salary times your years of source service. Ron, do you have the, do you know what the calculation is offhand for a pension?
Luke, how much money are we talking about here? Is it insignificant? And, you know, we'll
I just don't know how you, I, I don't know how you access.
I understand. I don't know either, but you know.
Yeah, I just, I think unless you're, like, there are a lot of rules for like, if you don't work X amount of time, you're not going to collect anything back. It's just going to be like, money, so, but I'm fine. You can put it in. I'm not, it's, it's a thousand bucks, fine. But I think I'd like to know from Ron, like, the rules, because if, if there's no way of us collecting, it's just pointless to put in the, the budget. So maybe, Ron, you could provide us with kind of what the rules are for us.
Yeah, I'll have to
How much money is the budget?
It's just a thousand bucks. It's nothing.
Come on, give me a break.
Yeah, no, I'm fine. But I, but if it's a thousand bucks, it could go to like some committee and use it, like.
I don't think so, but you cannot speak for the rest of us. Because this is what happened several years ago when we were been talking about insurance, and people said they didn't care about it. Other customer said, put it there so whoever needs X or Y to access it. If you choose not to access it, they're, even if it's a dollar, you choose not to access it. That's your prerogative not to use it. But I would say don't take that ability for other people to use it because it means something to them. And some people have done it. Some people have done it for their 20 years that they were here. You know, um,
Yeah, I, I get it. Selena, my point isn't that it should not be available. My point is that I don't know if it's actually accessible to us, but I'm, you can put it
Let, let it go.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, Ron Wilson, can you go ahead and, um, and add it, just take it for contingency. It's only 1,040, okay?
Yeah, yeah, so I'll put it back to you.
Thank you so much. All right, council, is there anything else you see here that you guys would, would like to discuss about? Luca, see your hand raised. Go ahead.
Yeah, the, the other thing I want to say is, um, I think that for Jimmy's proposal, which, what might be useful for us is for Ron to tell us how much money we get by moving the lease payments forward to FY23, and just divide that figure by the number of staff positions. So we could know what the maximum amount of money we could give to staff as a raise would be. So, you know, Jimmy cited like 70,000, uh, you know, a, a $3,000 bonus or something. That would be like, I think, like $60,000. That might just be a little bit more than what we have. So, so that everybody understands the money that we have to, to deal with. And the, the kind of extra money we could just give to everybody, which would affect lower wage employees more than higher wage employees, which I think that that makes a lot of sense in my head. We would just, it would be helpful, I think, if Ron just tells us what the maximum amount could be.
I second that.
Okay, thank you. So Ron, um, if you could provide that information so we could make better decisions, that definitely will work.
Sure. I can do that.
And remember, we always do a combination of 3% plus a 2% or the other way. Okay, all right. So, um, anything else you guys see in this schedule? That you guys have any questions, uh, members of the public? After council, I can't think of some council so far. I know Nina has, has questions, Danielle has some questions. We have answered both of those questions or comments. Um, anybody else of the community wishes to say something, put your name, last name, street and block number. I know Nina and Danielle, I, I let it go this time, but you should know better. Street and block number, I know Nina and Danielle, I let it go this time, but you should know better. Okay, so if there's anybody else has a question, council, let me know if you have anything else you need to add to this. One or two. If there's any other concerns, questions, I guess, ask for about it, okay? Alright, so I did ask in the chat Melissa, she could please on the next work session. Out of the items that we have discussed in ARPA, so we continue working on that, you know, communication. So that way we could, usually we put them in a work session. We talk them through and then we decide collectively to move them to a voting. So that way we at least know that they're there and we could have that conversation, okay? Luke, I know you have the spreadsheet for ARPA, can you also make sure that with the amount that we have talked? What it will look like for us when it comes to. How much money we have in ARPA and how much money we will be left out, including. The home improvement on it, including the extra money for the scholarships. And everything else that we have talked about moving from here to ARPA, okay? So for the next work session, can you please help us out with that? So that we have a better understanding of how much money we have already allocated, how many money we're working on real, working allocating. Right, and how much money we have left over. To make decisions of, and also take into the session the comment that Jared did make. Some of those projects that we do have. Because of inflation, the prices might have gone up, so we need to take into account some of the money that we have. Allocated for some of those big projects. In order to make sure that we are covered and not waiting for the last bit of money. To try to make sure we account for inflation on the cost of them. Jared, that was more or less what you mentioned, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so Melissa did say that she will add it to the next session, so please be prepared. And please look over the agenda so that we also know like everything was like added to it. Ron, if you could also send it to Melissa as well, so we're all on the same page. Because you are basically a finance consultant, so you definitely need to know where. Our movements, our next movement when it comes to ARPA, okay? On it, it says move to ARPA, add discussion on it, because this means it's been moved to ARPA approval already, okay? Luke, go ahead.
And I would just say that the spreadsheet I circulated after our last budget meeting with the changes we discussed there. Most of which are reflected here, it did have the total ARPA expenses, including the home repairs, like what. We have available seven hundred and seventy-three thousand now, if we fund everything we've talked about. We would have three hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred left over, and that's it, that's spreadsheet.
Can you just recite, do you send it out to Ron and Melissa as well, or just us?
Yeah, Ron and Melissa as well. Ron, you should have that.
We already have that.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So I guess review it and make sure Melissa that everything is covered. If we missed something here, because some items were not in the budget, they were just mentioned for ARPA. So we could start the conversation either on all of them or as many as we need to as we go. But at least we want to make sure it has a landing, something in the agenda, list each one by the amount, so that way. We alert the public of the conversation we're having and two, we also are fully aware of what it looks like. Alright Melissa?
Okay Mayor.
Okay, and Ron, I definitely want to make sure you have that information as well as Kamali, because. You guys are basically working on the financial end and that end. The other thing to bring up, there's at least one or two proposals when it comes to the. To the fees from codes. That we need to add to the work session that has been proposed to us by the co-director in the team. So we also need to have that discussion because the budget. The fees for, the fee for the city are part of the budget in order for us to line up everything we need. In order to approve the budget, okay? Is there anything else I'm missing regarding this? Ron, can you do me a favor, can you give me the final totals now for the budget, what it looks like when it comes to the new total for what, what the budget total is?
Yeah, so. How, how deep do you want me to do this?
Because we're aligned item by item, if you could please at least give us, one, the overall, what was the reduction? Because we do reduce some items and we move some items around, what does it look like right now?
Yeah, so our, so our total budgeted revenue is thirteen million five hundred and seventy-four thousand nine thirty-two point seven three. And our total expenses are the same.
Okay, the other thing is like, one of the questions that I was asked, how come we went from a five to a twelve to a thirteen? The twelve and the thirteen included the grants, correct?
Yes, yes.
Can you do me a favor, can you guys make a note of what it looks like for the money itself? And separate the grants, if it's not highlighted, or put it somewhere else. Thank you so much. Can you also make a note in the bottom, because it was very hard for people to like see it and for me to also see it, you know, when I was reading it like virtually, okay?
Will do.
Thank you so much, because for people it was a big jump to go from like five to thirteen. As listed on this document, right, so the, the top part, right, the top part itself, it does not translate evenly bad. That is what our working budget is. The other thing is like, remember, because of the work of the, how the speed camera works. Is based on our general fund expenses, so we need to make sure that we get ten percent of whatever the general fund expenses is. Alright, okay, so. Council, any questions about any of the line items that we discussed so far? Remember, this is just a read-through, you're not voting on anything, we're just moving stuff around as we see fit. And we'll have like other work session discussions and other budget readings and we're ready to vote, we'll be ready to vote. Okay, so this part is done. If you guys have no further questions, I've seen nothing on the chat. I did had a, I did have a question regarding the garden committee. I know originally it was placed to four thousand dollars, but mainly it was done because the city was supposed to provide a fence. Mr. Kamali, that was provided around your time, correct?
Yes.
So that's the reason why the garden committee went up so high, but it usually is not that high. Go ahead.
I reached out to them and Valerie is here as the liaison. I believe that they have the anniversary of community garden. I defer to Valerie because I did email them and asked them what was the reason to go from two thousand to four thousand. And I believe, you know. Valerie weighed in and she told me that they have anniversary and some other costs. So I defer to council member Valerie here.
Valerie, I'll have you next. The other thing, if we're not the communities, like they are getting ten thousand dollars from a grant that. Valerie led and wrote and also as well with some support from our grant writer. So there is ten thousand dollars that they have there, that's the wild surprise of the additional four thousand, so it'll be. Fourteen thousand for that line item and, you know, I wanted to know. What was the reason why they needed the extra money? Because originally it was increased to do the fence. And public works to care of the fence, and it was also backed up with some of the funding they were able to. To, to collect, but, you know, go ahead Valerie.
Thank you, yeah. So as we is on to the guarding, the committee for the garden, the community garden, it's on, by the Richardson Park. So that part, that garden is celebrating its tenth anniversary this year. And is working to make upgrades to the, to the garden itself. The ten thousand dollar grant is. Being used to make the garden more ADA accessible. It's helping to repair its compost, which was damaged by a tree. And it's also working toward creating a better water source for the garden. Unfortunately, in order to get the infrastructure in to create that water source for the garden, I think it's gonna cost a little more than. Ten thousand dollars on its face, so the community garden is looking to continue to raise funds. You know, their grant, their, their operating budget this past year was cut to twenty-five hundred. They had previously been at four thousand. And, you know, they're committed to continuing to looking for more grants and funding, but right now I think it's possible to keep them at four thousand dollars. In the budget, I think that would be helpful to show that we're committed to the community garden. That the community garden is able to grow and to continue to build on what's already done. And to make sure that, you know, in the next year or so that they can have a sustainable water source. So that they don't have to keep flushing water down the street when they open the fire hydrant to do that, to water their garden. So, that's really what it's for, you know, I'm open to suggestions, but I think if we can keep it where it is right now, that would be helpful. So thank you.
I would say at least for me, I've considered, at least, me, I'll think about the four, but it'll be like only for this year and then it'll go back to like. Two thousand or whatever three thousand is. Because at a certain point, I also need to figure out what they're doing there, what we have asked for information, it's very hard to receive. Right, so that's something we definitely need to work on. One of the last purchases they made about two years ago was. An electrical, Mr. Kamali, was it an electrical lawnmower? What, which one was it?
I don't recall that one, Mayor, I have to look into it.
Please, and we definitely wanted to make sure that we know where, where it's being stored, where it's at and. You know, what's going, what's going on with the pieces they need, but also I'll look into what the proposals are. For the committees and figure out what they propose for them to do for that. I'm trying to, in my head, work that each committee at least brings a proposal together with more specifications and more information. In order for us to have a better sense of what's happening, because I'm getting a lot of questions from residents about. If we're giving them a chunk, what is specifically are they doing? Some of them are more out there, so you definitely see what they're doing. And some of them not as much, and I need to be able to make sure that not just us, but our team is able to answer those questions. With a lot more, with a lot more clarity. Go ahead Valerie, see your hand.
Yeah, thank you. I think, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind is the community garden has been used by the cultural academy for excellence. Over the last couple of years to help residents and students in apartment buildings learn about community gardening. That was something that was done during the pandemic, and I know that because we were trying to work with them to, you know, expand garden access at the gazebo as well. And so that's just something, it's a, it's a resource, and I think, you know, the community garden committee can certainly do a better job of. Publicizing and explaining kind of all the work they're doing, all the potential that they have. And things like that, so I think it's definitely something we can work toward, so thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah. Because we got an email saying regarding the fees. And people were concerned because it sounded like the plots are being used by other people outside the city, so they're wondering what the process looked like and why they were being used by others. So I'll send all the questions that are received, right, but it's just regarding the meeting, I think it's like for, for the committees as we continue working on. You know, restructuring to be able to better answer the questions and be able to support our, not us as just liaises, but also our staff. Who's also liaison to the committees and when people are asking, you know, there was questions, we know what the information is. Alright, that's all I have. Anything else you guys need for this portion? Thank you Melissa. As we move over to item number four. Okay, so I'll move on to item report, reading of ordinance oh five dash twenty-three, nor establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget and preparing the funds for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Beginning July first twenty twenty-three, ending July thirty twenty twenty-four, the mayor and council will have a reading of the ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty-three. Melissa, can you put it up on screen, please? Okay, Jared, I'm gonna use your wonderful voice to read this ordinance. Go ahead.
Thank you, I'm flattered. City of Mount Rainier ordinance number five dash twenty twenty-three. Introduced by mayor and city council. An ordinance establishing the tax rate, adopting an annual budget and appropriating funds for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. Whereas in accordance with section six dash three oh three of the tax property article of the annotated code of Maryland. By July fifth of every year, the council of the city of Mount Rainier shall set the. Tax rate for the next fiscal year and all assessments of property subject to municipal corporation property tax and. Whereas a public hearing must be held prior to the establishment of municipal corporation tax rate. If the new tax rate will exceed the constant yield tax rate as calculated by the state of Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation and. Whereas the proposed tax rate for fiscal year twenty twenty-four will exceed the blended constant yield tax rate of seventies, sorry. Zero point seven six three dollars or seventy-six point three cents per a hundred dollars of assessed valuation. And whereas pursuant to city of Mount Rainier charter section seven oh two dash A, sorry, seven oh two dot A. The city manager submitted a recommended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-four to the council for its review and consideration. And whereas the budget provides a complete financial plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. And contains estimates of anticipated revenue and proposed expenditures for the upcoming fiscal year and. Whereas the city of Mount Rainier charter section seven oh two dot B requires the council to conduct a public hearing. Prior to adoption of the budget, and whereas after giving public notice, the council held, held. A public hearing on the constant yield tax rate and to receive comments on the proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget and tax. On March twenty-fifth twenty twenty-three and. Whereas after considering the recommended fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget submitted by the city manager and the comments that were made at the public hearing on the budget and tax rate. The council adopts the budget and tax rates as set forth in this ordinance. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Mount Rainier, Maryland, this. Day of twenty twenty-three as follows. Section one, tax rate dash real property, the tax rate for all single-family residential real property. Subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be zero point seven five dollars or seventy-five cents. Per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June third. Excuse me, sorry, June third, thirtieth twenty twenty-four. The tax rate for all. Townhouse residential real property. Subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy-five, zero point seven five dollars or seven five cents per. Hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. The tax rate for all multifamily residential real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be eighty-six. Dollar, uh, zero point eight, zero point eight six. Dollars or eighty-six cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three. And ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. The tax rate for all commercial real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be zero point seven nine dollars or seventy-nine cents per hundred dollars. Of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending. June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. The tax rate for all industrial real property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be seventy-nine cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. The tax rate for all vacant developed for a property subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be. Two dollars and fifty cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation. For fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. Section two, tax rate dash business personal property. The tax rate for all business personal property tax, subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier, shall be point nine nine. Zero point nine nine dollars or ninety-nine cents per hundred dollars. Of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. Tax rate, operating property of railroad and public utilities, the tax rate for all operating property of railroad and public utilities. Subject to taxation by the city of Mount Rainier shall be two dollars and seventy-five cents. Per hundred dollars of assessed valuation for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. The, sorry, section four, general fund revenues. Amounts should be adopted and appropriated as the general fund budget for all revenue for fiscal year twenty twenty-four. Beginning July first twenty twenty-three and ending June thirtieth twenty twenty-four. Tax revenue, six million two hundred and twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and two dollars and seventy-nine cents. Licenses and permit, seven hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, nine hundred and, wait, sorry. Seven hundred and thirty-four thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and fifty cents. Intergovernmental revenue, five hundred and forty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and forty-four cents. Charges for services, twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Fines and forfeitures, eighty, eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Miscellaneous, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand and six hundred dollars. Grants. Five million forty-six thousand sixty-three dollars. Grants, five million, forty six thousand, sixty three dollars. Total budget revenue, total budgeted revenue, thirteen million, five hundred and seventy four thousand, nine hundred and thirty two dollars and seventy three cents. Section five, general fund expenditure.
Jared, you're breaking up again. Check your audio.
Okay, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, not clearly.
Sorry, I think it's just my voice cracking, sorry. Wages, wages and leave pay. I'll try to enunciate clearly. Wages and leave pay, three million, three hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and seventy six dollars and twenty seven cents. Employee benefits and services, one million, eight hundred and ninety six thousand, two hundred and eighty three dollars and seven cents. Materials and supplies, two hundred and seventy six thousand, two hundred dollars. Repairs and maintenance, a hundred forty thousand dollars. Professional services, eight hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, eight hundred and fifty, sorry, eight hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Other services and charges, four hundred fifty one thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty nine cents. Community activities, a hundred seventy seven thousand dollars. Infrastructure and facilities maintenance, eight hundred and sixty, eight hundred seventy six thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars. Capital outlay, capital dash capital project, two hundred fifty seven thousand dollars. Debt service, three hundred and twenty six thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars. Grand expense, five million, forty six thousand and sixty three dollars. Total budgeted expenditures, thirteen million, five hundred and seventy four thousand, five hundred and seventy four thousand nine hundred and thirty two dollars and seventy three cents. Section six, general fund expenditure categories by department. The following amounts shall be adopted and appropriated as the general fund budget for all expenditure categories by department for fiscal year twenty twenty four, beginning July first twenty twenty three and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty four.
Jared, you're cracking. Your voice is cracking again.
Do you want me to try to plug in a headset or keep on going?
I think when you get close like that, because here you're loud and clear, I think when you move backwards, when you start cracking.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna lean in, literally. Uh, city governance. Seventy four thousand, a hundred and sixty dollars. Sorry, Valerie, you're shaking your head. Is it still better?
You said city governance and it worked, and then you started reading and then it stopped working.
So basically, she gave you the thumbs up and then it went downhill.
Wait, one, one sec.
All right, how about this? Luke, since you're next to that rotation, you wanna go ahead while Jared finds his mic?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Jared's gotta mute his mic.
Jared, mute your mic.
All right, city hall, five million, five hundred and four thousand, four hundred and eighty three, ninety nine cents. Administrative Services Department, six hundred and eighty six thousand, seven hundred and ninety four. Code Compliance Department, four hundred and fifty thousand, two forty six. Economic Development Department, three hundred and fifty four thousand, six hundred and sixty eight. Police Department, three million, seven hundred and seventy eight thousand, six hundred and twenty six. Public Works Department, two million, three hundred and forty two thousand, seven hundred and twenty six. Debt Services, three hundred and twenty six thousand, five hundred and eighty, and Continuancy, fifty six thousand, six hundred and forty six. For total budgeted department expenditures of thirteen million, five hundred and seventy four thousand, nine hundred and thirty two and seventy three cents. Uh, full-time employees for each department and city hall for FY twenty four will be three, admin services five, code compliance is four, economic development one. Police Department, twenty three, public works, ten, and total budgeted FTEs of forty six in FY twenty four.
Yes, the pause is staying the same so far for right now. Okay, go on.
And that's it.
Okay, so you guys heard our first reading. There's certain things that will change here as the budget goes on. Whether there was a contingency, a thousand forty less. And I'm not sure what else you took out of contingency. I think the other money's gonna be taken care of that. But saying that, you have heard the first reading of the ordinance oh five dash twenty twenty three. Uh, we do have a question on the chat from the new car, three hundred block of shepherd. Is this type are going to continue beyond this year? And so how does the council propose to pay for a difference next year, assuming there'll be no ARPA money next year to shift line items to in order to make room for it? Um, I think a briefly spin it. So the way the the budget, the the tax break basically works is the tax rate. It's once you establish and we pass, it stays on until we make a change, until you increase it or decrease it. So once the, uh, the next is gonna be, the new one is gonna be seventy five, once we vote on it. So let's say next year we decide to leave it alone, not touch it, it'll stay seventy five ongoing. If we, let's say we decide to increase it to whatever X amount, that'll be the new tax rate for that upcoming year and for years to come. That's basically what my answer was, yes and no. But at the minimum, from July first, twenty twenty three until June, June thirty, twenty twenty four, that'll be the the tax rate, unless we do something to change it. Um, I hope that clarifies a little bit, Danielle. As for your second question, um, how does council propose to pay for a different tax this year, assuming there'll be no ARPA money next year to shift like I said? I think it's gonna be a bigger discussion, Danielle, because you are right, we were able to, um, ship a couple of things out, uh, from here to ARPA, and as you heard, our ARPA funding is gonna be reduced as we reallocated stuff. Um, once we relocate, we have until twenty twenty six to pay the last bill from ARPA, more or less, once they're located. Um, but the presentist also waited on the yield, and depending what the yield is, that's a seven, the point seventy five percent for a hundred square foot asset of a set value, more or less. Um, regarding the conversation, yeah, that's something that we need to have a discussion of. Basically, we're gonna have to go through the budget next year or through the year and figure out, one, if anything is costing more or less, right? And number two, you basically revisit the budget every year to make sure that, um, you you know where to put the money, and that's the reason why some years we have to have cut items or reduce them. Uh, mainly because, um, mainly because, um, you know, there's only so much we could like stretch in the budget, and we need to make sure we also save some money for our resource already there. All right, so that's my short explanation of that. Uh, Luke, is there something specifically you need to have regarding the ordinance? Or what is it, what is it that you wanna talk about?
Yeah, I just wanna address those questions and give a little bit more of an answer there.
So I was asking to just hold. First, I'm gonna ask the council, do they have anything regarding the ordinance we just read, and then we could address the question, okay? You're good with the, with the ordinance, Luke, so far?
Yep.
Good with the first reading? Valerie, good with the first reading? Jared, good?
Yes, I am.
Oh, loud and clear, Jared.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, so for the record, we did the first reading. Thank you, Jared, and look at the effort stepping in. Now you know what I go through. I will be rotating the reading, so be ready for the next round. So that part is done. Uh, Luke, I'll go ahead and see the floor. There's something else you need to, um, you need to add?
Yeah, I would just say, Danielle, um, when we made decisions on a couple of things. One, when we made made decisions to move expenditures to ARPA during our budget hearing discussion, we made sure those were one-time expenses. In other words, we asked finance and the department heads whether these were expenses we were gonna see on the budget in every year or whether this is just a one-time expense and we needed to do this, why not pull from ARPA? So we had a conscious decision about which expenses we moved to ARPA, and they were only one-time expenses so that we wouldn't have to worry about, um, in future years, where are we gonna find that money? The other thing is that related to ARPA expenditures that we've already allocated, they're sort of like dream things that we never really have money to do, or we have to always find grant money to do. So our stormwater management product projects that are taking up a lot of this, um, Potts Hall, um, our food security efforts that we did, that that Ma- Mayor Benitez did all over the city, um, our rent can, our our rent assistance. Stuff that like we normally don't put in the budget and we had the money to do, we did. We don't expect those items to come into the budget. Potts Hall will find money for, Streets and Sidewalks will find money for. We have that money in the budget and we have more room there. But, uh, but yeah, I think we're in a, the city, we've put ourselves in a really good space such that we don't have ARPA impacting our budget down the line. Thanks.
Thank you so much. And, uh, well, Danielle, you're the only candidate for war one, right? So you're gonna be sitting on this side, making those decisions, um, if everything works smooth after May first. So thank you for joining us and enduring this pain with us. I think we all have been on the other side as well. Okay, um, I I understand. That's what said, if, when, or can, but you're usually pretty active as well, so thank you for that. All right. So this is the first reading. Um, it's gonna be read again. Uh, more likely more towards the end, because some of those numbers would will shift depending on what we wanna, if we wanna cut anything else. Um, what, uh, Ron would do is like, you remember how we remove a thousand forty for contingency, so that number will be updated? Ron, can you make sure when the ordinance is there, you also highlight on the side what has, what has been updated, so we are aware of what it is? So that way the public also is aware what it looks like, okay?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much. All right, seeing that there's no other questions or comments on this item, can we go ahead and move to the next item? All right, so this will be the second reading, um, in adoption ordinance oh uh, four dash twenty two three, amending ordinance ten twenty two to defer effective day that to the, to defer the effective day of the rent civilization ordinance, um, therefore until January first, twenty twenty four, and declaring that council intends to be bound by the terms of the Pregeorges County CB O seven twenty two three, December thirty first. So there in council will have the second read option of the ordinance. Melissa, can you make sure you put rent civilization on on the, on the wording, so make sure it's a little bit more clear what we're talking about, the agenda itself? Okay?
Okay, Mayor.
So that's something I'll go add. Um, can you, um, can you guys, can you go through the ordinance itself? Okay, so you guys, over here, we did have our first read on April fourth, twenty twenty three. Um, this will be, um, it says emergency ordinance oh four twenty twenty three, this will be the second reading, and it's up for a vote tonight. Um, and so we could vote on it. Um, so basically, to give you a summary of what it looks like, it's, um, the Pregeorges County has CB O seven twenty twenty three, which is the emergency rent civilization ordinance that will take effect April seventeenth. The city, the city currently has a rent civilization, um, that was passed, right? So what we have decided, uh, to do is defer until next year, Jerry, twenty twenty four in order to fall under the Pregeorges County Emergency Emergency, um, Rent Civilization. That's basically what it is. In the meantime, we'll get everything else we need. We will, um, our team has already prepared a letter that will go out, once it's approved to the landowners, to let them know, landlords, to let them know what we're gonna be falling into the Pregeorges County CB O seven twenty twenty three, okay? Um, the effective day will be April seventeenth, and, um, that will defer to January, uh, twenty twenty four. Okay, that's where we are, where we're at with it. So we had a full read through. How long is this document, uh, Melissa? Okay, all right, so those are basically the these are basically the highlights of of it. Um, we'll be having a second reading, so therefore, um, we will follow the emergency, um, number called CB does, like council bill oh oh seven dash twenty twenty three, the emergency rent civilization. So ours is not disappearing. We're putting it on pause as we follow the emergency one. And in January, we'll go ahead and activate it, and we'll be able to gather more information and send out everything else we need to send out. All right, council, um, I'm gonna open up this for, um, discussion. Um, and let me know if there's anything else you need to add. I'm gonna go, uh, war one, Jimmy, Luke, Valerie, Jared.
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you, Jimmy. Uh, Luke?
Uh, no, I think this all makes sense, given what the county's done, uh, and give us some time to get staff up to speed. Thanks.
Thank you so much. Valerie, uh, Jared?
I'm good, thank you.
No additional, no additional comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you guys hear no additional comment, it's mainly because we have, um, we talked about the renovation for every day, and we also talked about the emergency one previously, so this is more like of, you know, for Valerie to make sure we're on it. All right, guys, so can I have, um, a motion on the floor to, uh, can you bring it down, Melissa? To approve the emergency ordinance, uh, ten, oh, sorry, emergency ordinance oh four dash twenty twenty three? I make the motion to approve it any second?
Second.
Seconded.
It's been probably moved in second. Any additional discussion? Um, I, I will tell you one thing related to this. Mainly that the county council will be having a meeting, I believe it's next week, regarding some of the problems they already seen. So, um, when it comes to, um, landlords increasing heavily, rent above the three percent. Uh, but also, um, talking about senior citizen housing that, um, to, that they are aware that it also qualifies or should qualify under rent civilization. So the city will put that information out. This is, uh, the county council be hearing, um, this information. So you guys are welcome to, you know, send us the information, I'll put it together and send it to the county council. So that way they have any information. We did receive an email from a resident, and we are following up, uh, with it. So that's my only discussion item. Um, any abstentions? Objections? I think you guys wanted to do a verbal vote. So Jimmy?
Wha- what are you asking about, Cole? Yes.
Yes. Uh, Luke?
Yes.
Jared?
Hi.
Valerie?
Hi.
All right, so this emergency ordinance oh four dash twenty two passes unanimously. Okay, so Melissa immediately, um, immediately put a note, um, this order out the door tomorrow, so that we could be able to fulfill that information out. And council, okay, you guys make sure you stop by this weekend, sign this document as well, okay? I'll, I'll be there, I'll be there to sign. That's here.
Melissa text us about when it's ready.
Is this ready to go, Melissa, tomorrow for sign?
Yes, but I'll send you an email and when it's ready, when I finish burning it out.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. All right. Next item of the agenda? Melissa, I know you wanna hold us captive, but you really wanna go. All right, Melissa, can you put the last, uh, the, um, guys, item number six, adjournment? Um, there's one item I definitely wanna make sure to tell the public before we go adjournment. Sorry for this moment of privilege. On this Saturday, April fifteenth, there's gonna be a food distribution at, uh, Common Stone being hosted in collaboration with our police department, the City of Mount Rainier, being hosted by our Senator Marka Magazine, our delegate, Anna Fennell, and the delegate, um, Julian Ivy. Um, so the flowers are allowed, but it's gonna be a food, um, distribution that'll be, um, this Saturday. Melissa, do you know what time, off the top of your head?
I think it's from eleven. Yes, eleven.
Eleven.
Eleven o'clock, so, um, if anybody would like to volunteer, so if we have any youngsters or any people in the community that would like to volunteer to help put some stuff together or give out food, um, come out around ten, you know, um, in order for us to be there to help. Uh, that'd be great and wonderful. And big thank you to our representative. Basically, every year they do a night out where they buy various members of the community to, uh, you know, a buffet eating and stuff. I know Jimmy, we're part of that collective as well at one point. Um, so this year they decided to do every month a different city. They've gone to Calmer Manor. They're coming here, they're gonna go to Brentwood or Brentwood and so on, but, uh, this month is the City of Mount Rainier, so decided giving, uh, food directly to the community is is a way for them to celebrate and get close to the community that the need for food is still there. All right. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
It's been probably move a second. Any discussion? Objection, subvention? Um, hearing none. Um, this meeting has been adjourned, and I guess we'll see you guys for our next session meeting with plenty of great information. All right, eleven to two PM is the time. Um, thank you guys so much, and take care. Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you, Steph.
Bye.